Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As we all know, we all met here in September, so this is a pretty short interval between then and now. But between that time, the town of Harwich has lost three incredibly decent and meaningful people, people who made it important to live here and to thrive here. So with that, I mention the names of Peggy Rose, Link Thatcher, and of course, our colleague, Stephen Ford. We'll miss them all. Harwich will never be the same without them. So I'm asking you to offer a moment of silence right now. And thank you, Selectmen Howell, for that moment. I think it goes without saying, there's no smoking. In order to participate in the meeting, you have to have stopped by the clerk's registrar's office, and you should have one of these. You've got to have a purple voter tag in order to vote and participate in the meeting. So anyone who doesn't have one of those, you've got to go and get one now. You'll be required to show it on any standing count. Anyone who's a non-voter should be outside the fence, so we can keep track. The non-voting section, as I say when I'm in the gymnasium, is the bleacher section immediately to my right. A little farther away here and a little bigger, but it's still the bleacher section to the For those of you who haven't been to a Harwich Town Meeting before, we have our own rules of parliamentary procedure. The selectmen, when they put together the warrant book for you, put that information in. I think it's on pages two and three. There's some miscellaneous Town Meeting bylaws on page two, and page three is our motion chart that we have in Harwich that governs rules of procedure here. And it lists all the various motions in order at a meeting, the quantum of vote necessary, whether they're debatable or not, and that's there, there, for a visual guide for you. For things that we don't address in the chart, because obviously the chart can't address every situation, our reference is Town Meeting Time, the Massachusetts Moderator's Handbook, which I would reference in the event we have a situation that isn't covered locally. If you're looking to speak, today we have CERT volunteers again. I'm so thankful to them. They assist not only here, but in other towns on the Cape during the pandemic. They will, as you rise and raise your hand and I recognize you, they will bring a microphone to you, and they are able to clean the mics in between different people speaking, so that we'll ensure that they're properly sanitized. And again, much appreciation and a load of thanks to the CERT folks. The procedure at Town Meeting involves, I will read each article unless it's an article that is of some length. For example, Article Four is our Town Budget. I'm not going to read the entire Appendix B, which is in the back of your warrant, which comprises the individual line items in the budget. I assume when you get here that you've had an opportunity to familiarize yourself with the articles and the warrant. I will read the introductory part or the major part of most articles, but things like the budget, like the capital plan, long descriptions, some of the CPC articles, I will not read in their entirety. One correction in the warrant book, the ballot questions that were published just for informational purposes, there was no legal requirement to publish them, in the back, were the incorrect ballot questions, and we've substituted the correct ones. I think if you've picked up a warrant book today here at the meeting, you have that substitute page in the back that refers to the ballot questions that we will be dealing with when we go to the polls. So now I'd like to recognize Anita Doucette, Town Clerk, for reading the return of the warrant.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Harwich Annual Town Meeting, May 8, 2021, Barnstable County, to either of the constables of the Town of Harwich and said county greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of town qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Montemoy Regional High School Stadium Field, 75 Oak Street, and send town on Saturday, May 8, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. there, then and there, to act on the following articles. April 21, 2021, by virtue of this warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Harwich qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the Montemoy Regional High School Stadium Field, 75 Oak Street, and send town on Saturday, May 8, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. at the time and the place for the purpose herein named by posting up attested copies thereon in the four post office buildings, and in the Town Hall, and in the Community Center, which covers all four precincts, at least 14 days before the time of said meeting as directed and causing an attested copy thereof and published in the Cape Cod Chronicle published in Barnstable County and having its circulation in the Town of Harwich. Signed, David Robinson, Constable.
Thank you, Mrs. Doucette. When I started the meeting, I had a breeze and the warrant blew off, so I've got a brick up here that's kind of holding down something, so. Article One, to choose various Town Officers and Committees. Mr. Chori, do you have a motion?
Yes, Article One, Town Officers and Committees. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion made in second to accept and adopt Article One. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. At this time, the moderator makes the following appointments. On the Finance Committee, Brian Weiner to a three-year term, expiring June 2024; Daniel Toick to a three-year term, expiring June 30, 2024; and Karen Doucette to a three-year term, expiring June 30, 2024. I also appoint James B. Stinson Esquire as a trustee of the Caleb Chase Trust Fund for a three-year term, expiring June 30, 2024. And I appoint the Building Commissioner, Mr. Chesley, as the surveyor of wood and lumber. And I reserve the right to make all other appointments at a later time. Article Two, to hear all Town Officers' reports of all Town Officers and Committees for the year 2020. Mr. Chori?
Article Two, reports of Town Officers and Committees. I move and accept, I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved in second that Article Two be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? I see none. I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. At this time, I'll recognize Mr. Chori to give the annual Finance Committee report. Mr. Chori?
Good morning. My name is John Chori. I am Chair of the Harwich Finance Committee. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen have prepared a fiscal year 2022 warrant of totaling 49 articles with a budget total of $80,847,370. The warrant makes up five operating budgets comprised of the Town Operating Budget, the Montemoy School Budget, Cape Cod Technical High School Budget. Details for these numbers can be seen in Article Appendix B, Water Department Budget, Article VII, and the Wastewater Department Budget of Article VIII. The warrant also includes Community Preservation Committee articles and capital request articles. Contained in the five-year capital plan, which is in Appendix C in your book, are capital requests totaling $6,419,724, of which $2,157,766 is for Community Preservation Committee articles. There are two capital requests that require a Proposition Two and a Half override this year. Article 19 is for the purchase of a pumper ladder truck, commonly known as a quint, and Article 20 is for road maintenance program. The voting on these two articles, on these two ballot questions, is May 18, and they are, as mentioned in Appendix A in your warrant book. There are five operating budgets in this warrant, Articles Four through Eight. The Town Operating Budget increased by $346,988. The Montemoy Regional School Budget increased by $541,002. The Cape Cod Technical High School Budget decreased by $201,480, and this was mainly due to student enrollment drop from 58 students to 51 students. The Water Department Budget decreased by $67,670, and this is mainly in the salary and wages line. The wastewater budget increased by $242,399 due to anticipated contract professional services due to homes starting to be connected to the wastewater system. In total, the five operational budgets increased $886,239 over last year's budget. There are a couple important items in the warrant I would like to point out to the voters. In last year's Town Meeting, we authorized $574,171 to be borrowed from the stabilization fund. The stabilization fund is basically the town's rainy day fund for emergencies to help balance the physical FY '21 budget. That amount plus $500,000 for a total of $1,741,171 is being asked to be approved in Article 43. Last year, no contributions were made to OPEB. OPEB, which is O-P-E-B, stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. These benefits are health insurance and other benefits that the town owes retired town employees for their lifetime. The amount requested in Article 44 is $500,000. This has been an extraordinary year, given all the challenges that COVID has presented to all of us. I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen for all their work in putting the 2021 Annual Town Meeting warrant together so that we may have this Town Meeting, the Town Administrator Joe Powers, and Finance Director Carol Coppola for their continuous support, guidance, and help that they've given us, the Finance Committee, and all the public works and public safety employees that physically put this event together and continually to keep us safe. All our meetings with department heads and other town committees were held virtually/remotely. In-person meetings were pretty much nonexistent. I would like to acknowledge and thank the members of the Finance Committee for the many hours they have put in reviewing and voting on Town Budgets and Warrants. And finally, my enormous gratitude and thanks go out to the many other dedicated committee volunteers that contributed their time to enhance the running of the Town of Harwich. They too face the same challenges of the Finance Committee faced in bringing you these matters. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chori. Article Three, see if the Town will vote. The salaries of the elected officials of the Town for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021, ending June 30, 2022, as follows, and to act fully thereon. Selectmen, $2,400 each; Moderator, $1,000; Water and Wastewater Commission is $5,000 each; Library Trustees, $7,000 each; Town Clerk, $103,503. Do I have a motion, Mr. Chori?
Article Three, elected official salaries. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved in second that Article Three be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article Four, this is our Town Operating Budget. See if the Town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow such sums of money as may be required to defray town charges for fiscal year 2022 and to act fully thereon. Do you have a motion, Mr. Chori?
Yes, I move that we accept and, I should read the whole motion here, I guess. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $39,027,463 be appropriated for the purpose listed in Appendix B under the column titled "TA Proposed FY 2022" with the following adjustments. Reduce Line 95 by $515,331 to zero. Reduce Line 140 by $308,390 to zero. Reduce Line 142 by $253,720 to zero. And reduce Line 143 by $236,649 to zero for a new Town Operating Budget figure at Line 149 of $39,027,463. And further, the sum of $36,218,073 be raised and appropriated, and that the following amounts be transferred as follows. $61,287 from Betterment and Septic Funds. $210,100 from PEG Access and Cable Related Fund. $233,050 from the Community Preservation Acts Fund. $13,855 from the FEMA Fund. $560,331 from free cash. $104,950 from the Golf Improvement Fund. $200,000 from overlay surplus. And $667,067 from State Aid Fund.
Do I hear a second? All right, the motion's been made by Mr. Chori under Article Four, the Town Budget. Before I go to Mr. Ballantyne, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, to present the budget as required under the Home Room Charter, let me just point out, because you didn't have the benefit of it, a couple of the changes that were made in the motion that Mr. Chori read. The total number that he moved is the same as the number on Page Nine, Operating Budget, in that small chart, $39,027,463. There were four lines, however, that in Appendix B that were reduced from the amounts listed in Appendix B to zero. And they were 95, which was wastewater, and that's because we're going to appropriate wastewater under Article Eight, so obviously we're going to do it in two places. And then Lines 140, 142, and 143 were all state or county or Cape Cod Commission assessments that the Town owes. And those are reduced to zero because when the Town gets its notification via cherry sheet from the state of state aid that's coming to the Town for the year, those assessments are already taken out. So we didn't need to appropriate them in the operating budget, and that's why they're reduced to zero. We're still paying them, we're just paying them a different way, and they're not in the budget. So with that, Mr. Ballantyne?
John has to read addition to Article Four to complete that.
Okay. What is the addition? I'm sorry, there's an addition, John?
Yes, there was two parts to that, and I can see the second part. I do now. Article Four, adding to the second part of the Article Four Town Operating Budget, further the sums of $727,304 and $31,446 be raised and appropriated in the general fund operating budget and allocated to water and wastewater enterprise funds respectively for the purpose of funding the fiscal 2022 operating budget.
And that's part of the motion as well, and those are the funds that we just discussed, the wastewater enterprise funds for 2022. So that was on Page Two of the motion. Who was it? Paul Harvey used to say Page Two. I missed Page Two, so that was my bad, so. But that's part of the operating budget. With that, Mr. Ballantyne?
Thank you, Mr. Ford. I'm shorter. Thank you for attending this Town Meeting and again doing so in an outdoor location and format, as I did last September. I also wish to especially thank those involved with making this meeting possible, which was a coordinated effort between the Town of Harwich staff and the Montemoy School staff. I will open my remarks by honoring three respected and loved Town residents who recently passed away. Selectman Howell offered a moment of silence. I continue with that. Selectman Ford, who contributed so much during his relatively, during his relatively short-term in office, his calm, intelligent input into every Board of Selectmen and Town discussion will be greatly missed. As you know, Harwich cannot function without its many volunteers. Peggy Rose, who recently passed away, was the leading volunteer in Harwich. Link Thatcher, in many ways, represented how we like to think of Harwich, a native son who prospered in cranberry farming and related businesses and found time for numerous Town volunteer services. I am also pleased to announce recent Town staff appointments. Joe Powers' efforts were recognized with his move from interim Town Administrator to Town Administrator. Megan Eldridge was promoted to Health Director, to Assistant Town Administrator, and John Ivan was hired as Town Planner. This year's budget discussion started with our request for a conservative budget. Although the local economy seems to be rebounding, the pandemic remains a concern and overall recovery is still uncertain. As we have stated in the past and continue to state, Harwich's finances are in great shape. Nevertheless, a five-year plan running through fiscal year 2025 had predicted a deficit starting in fiscal year '22 of approximately $400,000, reaching close to $3 million deficit in fiscal year 2025 if past spending practices continued. Mindful of the tax burden imposed by residents and businesses, we realize that the fiscal year 2018 to 2020 increases of 5% to 6% of each year were unsustainable. Happily, we have taken, been able to take steps to decrease these projected deficits. In line with this conservative approach, we directed the Town Administrator to develop a budget that is at most 2% higher than fiscal year 2021. We also requested a level-funded budget. These fiscal restraints require that every new hire and expense be carefully examined to minimize expenditures as we budget to meet necessary Town Services and Commitments. The budget presented in this year's warrant is in line with this request as the Town Operating Budgets increase 0.6%. With the single exception of the Fire Department, which must fulfill certain contract obligations, all departments are level-funded. The overall budget increased 2.8%, which includes a 2% increase in the Montemoy School assessment. We greatly appreciate the efforts of Montemoy to limit spending increases during the pandemic as they responded with an overall 0.7% budget increase. However, the assessment to each town is quite different. While Harwich's assessment increased approximately 2%, Chadham's decreased 4.2%. The reason for this was a rapid decline in the Chadham Elementary School involvement versus the Harwich Elementary School resulted in disparity in the cost per student, which means Harwich's assessment is significantly more than if assessment was based solely on enrollment numbers. Both towns and Montemoy Regional School District have been working to find a long-term fiscal solution that could more equally address the assessments of the towns, which we hope to bring back before the towns in the near future. We fully underestimate the impact that previous borrowings have had on taxpayers. Last year, we delayed several capital items. Caution still brews, and we have only two capital items in the warrant and on the ballot, which we hope you will approve. One is the $1.1 million purchase of a combined pumper and ladder truck, and the second is a $677,000 for road maintenance. We had postponed road maintenance the last year or two, but we needed to put this back in place as a necessity. Although delayed capital projects often increase future costs, it was decided that it is best to delay projects until economic growth and revenues have more fully rebounded. Future challenges. The first is the Montemoy Regional School District agreement related to the Harwich Elementary Elementary Schools needs to be addressed, needs to address the per-student cost discrepancy between the schools. Secondly, review, update, and implementation, and implement the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. This is a complex and expensive plan as we decide on the best plan to complete the Pleasant Bay watershed work and consider joining the Dennis and Yarmouth, with Dennis and Yarmouth as we build a regional sewer plant with all the benefits a shared plant would bring. Along with benefits, questions and concerns need to be fully vented in public discussions. It is important to note that although the discussions have been focused on the CWMP, the important discussion is the update of Harwich's local comprehensive plan to develop a vision for Harwich, including areas of potential growth, which in turn defines flow and capacity data for use in the CWMP. We need to continue to support affordable housing through the newly formed Housing Trust with support of the Community Preservation Committee and the Housing Committee. We hope you will approve Article 32, which appropriates $50,000 Community Preservation Act funds to support the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust Housing Coordinator. We look forward to utilize and add to the generous gift to the Town to build a sidewalk from Harwich Port to Sacatequa Harbor as soon as possible. We're working to complete a modest grant-funded improvement for Harwich Center. Another item moving forward this year is to work with Town Employees, Employee Unions on the upcoming collective bargaining agreements. And as always, we continue to work with Town Businesses and Residents to compromise on what seems to be an inherent conflict between residents and neighbors regarding the acceptable noise standards. Thank you, and thanks again for attending this year's Town Meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. So we're on Article Four, it's the operating budget. We have a motion to move the sum of $39,027,463. Is there any debate? I see none. I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read by Mr. Chori, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article Five, see if the Town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow such sums of money as may be required to pay for the Montemoy Regional School District Assessment for fiscal year 2022. Mr. Chori?
Article Five, Montemoy Regional School Budget. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $27,361,049 be appropriated for the purpose of funding the Town of Harwich Assessment for FY 2022 annual operation of the Town of Montemoy Regional School District, and that the sum of $27,87,789 be raised and appropriated, and further, that the sum of $273,260 be transferred from free cash for capital items.
Motion under Article Five's been moved and seconded. The number is that number that was on Page 10 in your warrant, $27,361,049. It's proposed to be funded by raising the tax levy, $27,87,789, and then transferring $273,260 from free cash. Is there any debate? I see none. I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
It is a vote. Article Six.
Article Six, Cape Cod Regional Tech Budget.
Just let me read the article first, Mr. Chori. Just let me read the article first. It's Cape Cod Regional Technical School District Budget, see if the Town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money as may be required to pay for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District Assessment for fiscal 2022. Mr. Chori?
Article Six, Cape Cod Regional Technical Budget. I move this article be accepted and adopted and as printed in the warrant, and the sum of $1,536,309 be raised and appropriated. of $1,536,309 be raised and appropriated to fund the annual operation of the Regional Technical High School.
It's been moved and seconded under Article Six, and the sum is $1,536,309, which is our assessment. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article Seven. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow such sums of money as may be required to defray the Water Department operating budget for fiscal 2022. Mr. Chori.
Article Seven, Water Department Budget. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and that the sum of $4,223,405 be transferred from the Water Department's receipts to operate the Water Enterprise Fund for this purpose. Salaries: $1,279,529. Indirect costs: $727,304. O.P.E.D. $50,000. And further, to transfer the sum of $50,000 from the Water Department budget to other post-employment benefits trust fund created under Article Eight of the May 6, 2014 special town meeting.
All right. The motion under Article Seven has been moved and seconded. It's the same number as shown on page 11 of your warrant, $4,223,504, $405, excuse me. And the categories are the same as listed in the chart under the article. Any debate on Article Seven? I see none. I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article Eight. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow such sums of money as may be required to defray the wastewater department operating budget for fiscal 2022. Mr. Chori.
Article Eight, Wastewater Budget. I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and further that the sum of $515,331 be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Salaries: $78,099. Indirect costs: $31,446.
Article Eight's been moved and seconded. The sum is $515,331. Is there any debate? Hearing none? Although it does sound like the Ospreys are excited about the wastewater budget. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article Nine. See if the town will vote to transfer from PEG access and cable-related funds such sums of money that may be required for the purpose of funding the public access station Cape Cod Community Meanie Center, 17 Chatto Roll Dennisport, providing the public access television to the citizens of Harwich. Said funds are paid by Comcast to the town for and restricted to use for local programming operations subject to and pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53F and Three Quarters. Mr. Chori.
Article Nine, Public Education and Government PEG Fund Request. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and further that the sum of $150,994 be transferred from PEG access and cable-related fund for this purpose.
All right. Motion's made and seconded under Article Nine. The sum is $150,994, and it's to be transferred from the PEG access and cable-related fund. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article Ten. I gotta turn my page here. See if the town will vote to enter into various lease-purchase financing agreements for town equipment included in the operating budget for FY 2022. Said leases may be for a term not to exceed useful life of equipment as determined by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Chori.
Article Ten, Lease-Purchase Agreements. I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded, Article Ten be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article Eleven. See if the town will vote to adopt the capital plan for the ensuing five-year period as proposed by the Board of Selectmen and is set forth below or is amended by the vote at town meeting and to act fully thereon. The entire capital plan, as I indicated at the outset, is Appendix C in the back of your warrant booklet. Mr. Chori.
Article Eleven, Adopt the Capital Outlay Plan. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in warrant, in the warrant as Appendix C.
Motion under Article Eleven is accept and adopt the capital plan as it's set forth in Appendix C. I see Mr. Howell rising.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is not so much to debate the article as to point out that the two debt exclusion items, the pumper ladder truck and the road maintenance program, will require you to go to the town election in order to actually pass this fully. Further, the fire truck is a remarkable effort by the fire department to take two pieces of equipment that normally would have been replaced individually and come up with a multipurpose vehicle that would fit that purpose. So they should be applauded for their fiscal conservatism for doing that. But again, when this passes, you still have not actually effectuated this. It has to be voted on during the town election.
Any further debate? We're on the capital plan. All those in favor of the motion, which is accept and adopt as printed in the warrant as an Appendix C, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article Twelve. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to fund the items in the table below included in the FY 2022 capital plan. Mr. Chori.
Article Twelve, Capital Items From Free Cash Under $50,000. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and further that the sum of $18,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article Twelve is accept and adopt. The sum is $18,000, and it's proposed to be transferred from free cash for that purpose. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article Thirteen. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money for engineering and surveying services necessary for the preparation of plans and bid processes for proposed sidewalks from the community center to the cultural center and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article Thirteen, Funds For Support of ADA Compliant Sidewalks Through Harwich Center. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and further that the sum of $50,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article Thirteen's been made and seconded, and it's $50,000 to be transferred from free cash for that purpose. Any debate? Yes, in the back, sir. Somebody get a microphone over to him. There's a hand up. I think there's a mic on its way to you, sir.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate it. I'm new at this, so please excuse me if I don't come across exact.
That's fine. If you could just introduce yourself so we know who you are, sir.
My name is Tom Meehan. I'm from, I have a store called Cape Cod Tile Works on Main Street, and I have a house on Parallel Street. My wife and I were going over this, and she couldn't make it today. And we totally agree about the $50,000 grant that will be permanent in the Town of Harwich for the sidewalks. But we have a problem with the grant of $142,000, and the problem we have there is it's going to eliminate parking on one side of the street. So across the street from Ruggies and my store, that whole stretch there, there will be no parking. As I walked down today, I saw that there were nine or 10 cars there going to Ruggies. We need that parking. This whole thing that they're proposing to do would be putting some type of jersey barriers up so they could extend the dining at the restaurant there, but this will carry up the street a little bit. We won't be able to get trucks in. Right in front of my store, there will only be one spot that can hardly get a medium-sized car in, so it's going to affect the whole area. And we believe that everything for the ADA should be in place, but it should be permanent. A lot of this project that is proposed is temporary, and I think it's going to affect the wonderful charm of Harwich Center and really put us in a tough predicament there. Excuse me as I check my notes there. And we want to keep historic, and I really put emphasis on historic Harwich Center, the way it should be, the beauty of it. And what else? I think the grant could be used for more permanent things like benches and other ways to, that could be reused later on. The town would then own it after the grant is complete, but this grant has to be done relatively quickly. So I think the two should be separated. That's the point I'm trying to make.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Meehan. I believe that the only thing under consideration in the article is the $50,000 for the engineering and surveying services for the preparation of plans and for bid process for sidewalks. So I don't think the grant is before the voters at this point.
I see that it's ready, they're marking the street, and it's in process right now.
I understand that, but that is not before the voters here in Article Thirteen.
Okay.
That grant is on a separate path and is not within the four corners of this article. So if you're in favor of the $50,000 for the ADA sidewalks, that's all this article is about. The explanation referenced the fact there was also a grant out there, but we're not voting on that.
Okay, I see. Thank you. Then how do I approach the other part with the grant?
I would say get in touch with the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen.
Which we have.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further debate on Article Thirteen? It looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion on Article Thirteen is accept and adopt. It's $50,000. It's for engineering and surveying for ADA compliance of the sidewalks in Harwich Center from the cultural center to the community center. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion carries. Article Fourteen. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to restore funds for the walkway design and construction project from Sacquetucket Harbor to Harwich Port and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article Fourteen, Sidewalks from Sacquetucket Harbor to Harwich Port. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and further that the sum of $200,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article Fifteen. It's accept and adopt. The sum is $200,000 to be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Is there any debate? Yes, sir, right here in the middle.
Hello, Gary Conroy, Bay Road. I wrote an editorial in the paper about this project a month or so ago, two months ago, and, you know, I think we should, as a community, invest much more in our sidewalks from a safety standpoint. I live over in East Harwich, and anybody who has ever walked from, I'll call the Muddy Creek Bridge to the Wequasset up towards Orleans, you're ready, you feel like you're going to die. And, you know, this project took six years to get to this state, and I think the complete streets program is a big obstacle to building sidewalks on Cape Cod and making it a safe, tourist-friendly community. And I fully support this project, but I think as a community, we have to invest more money in making our streets safer, and it's a balancing act to all the other initiatives we want to have. But as a tourist-driven economy, sidewalks are a big factor in making people want to come here. Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion under Article Fifteen? Yes, ma'am. Right here in the middle. Somebody's coming to you, I think.
Thank you. My name is Cheryl Stone. I'm a past president of Sacquetucket Bluffs Association off of Neal Road, and I just want to support the comments that were just made about this article to give my support and the support of the 43 families in our association. I'm a year-round resident. I think we all know walking from Sacquetucket Harbor into town is a dangerous venture, and it's a missing piece to all the investment we've made in the harbor. I think it'll benefit not only people coming in on the ferry, from their boats, from our communities surrounding the area, but also conversely from town to this wonderful jewel that we've created and supported as a community. So I heartily endorse this article, and I look forward to the support of the community and thank the board for their persistence in completing this.
Any further debate on the motion under Article Fifteen? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Again, the motion's a positive one, accept and adopt, and the sum is $200,000. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. Those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article Sixteen. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money to repair and replace the Brooks Free Library Roof.
No.
I'm sorry, did I skip one? I did. Article Fifteen. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to support the town's local stormwater permitting program management and act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article Fifteen, Funds For the MS4 Mandated Stormwater Permitting and Management Program. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and further that the sum of $200,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article Fifteen. It's accept and adopt. The sum is $200,000, and it's proposed to be transferred from free cash. Is there any debate on the motion under Article Fifteen? I don't see any. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we can get to the library roof. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, this is Article Sixteen, transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to repair and replace the Brooks Free Library Roof and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article Sixteen, Brooks Free Library Roof Replacement. I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and further that the sum of $148,500 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article Sixteen. It's accept and adopt. The sum is $148,500 for this purpose. Is there any debate? Yes, in the middle here.
I just wondered if we're still going with 20-year shingles. Does anyone know? It might be better to go with 30 or 40.
Mr. Powers, Town Administrator.
Mr. Moderator, Joe Powers, Town Administrator, Pleasant Lake voter. We haven't contemplated that that far on the type of shingles that we'd be procuring. We'll work with our DPW Facilities Maintenance Department to find out what is the appropriate use for that building and the appropriate materials, but the intent is to replace this roof for as long as possible. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So apparently they haven't picked a shingle as yet. Any further debate under Article 16? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 16, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 17. See if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of the town-owned property with the building thereon located at 5 Bells Neck Road from the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of leasing to a nonprofit for affordable and market-rate housing and for arts, cultural, educational, or other purposes, to the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of conveyance and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey said property on such terms and conditions and for such consideration and purposes as the Board deems in the best interest of the town, which may include reserving or obtaining an historic preservation restriction on said property, and to hereby rescind the terms, conditions, and restrictions placed on the disposition of said property by the votes taken under Article 60 of the 2006 Annual Town Meeting and Article 12 of the Special Town Meeting of May. I know the year for that, Joe. Pardon? It's in the motion? Okay. And to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 17. Authorize the sale of the 5 Bells Neck Road. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, except that the date of 2008 be added after May in the next and last line.
That's where it is, okay. So the motion under Article 17's been moved and it's been seconded. It adds, in addition to accept and adopting the year, 2008, after that word "May" in the next to the last line to identify which special town meeting that was. Debate on Article 17? I don't see any. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 18. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to purchase radios for the fire department and police department and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 18. Public safety radios. I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and further that the sum of $223,204 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article 18. It's accept and adopt. The sum is $223,204. It's coming from free cash. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 19. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to fund the purchase of a combination pumper-ladder fire truck, known as a quint, and all costs incidental and related thereto. The appropriation authorized by this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 1/2, the amounts required to pay the principal of and the interest on any borrowing authorized under this article. And further, in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost and issuance of the bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project and shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 19. Purchase of a combination pumper-ladder truck. Mine says requires a 2/3 vote on this. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $1,86,673 to fund the purchase of a combination pumper-ladder truck, known as a quint, and all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer will approve, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $1,86,673 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. The appropriation authorized by this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation of total taxes imposed by master under law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 1/2, the amounts required to pay the principal and an interest of the borrowing, of any borrowing authorized under this article. And further, in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, less any premium is applied to the payment of the cost of an issuance of such bonds and notes, or notes, may be applied to pay project costs and the amount authorized to borrow for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied.
All right, the motion under Article 19's been made and seconded, and I'm not going to read it again. Trust, it does mirror the article in the warrant with one exception, and that's the good news. The sum is less than that proposed in the article. It's $1,86,673. Is there any debate on Article 19? Yes, sir, in the middle. Over here, ma'am. Thanks.
Gerald Beltis, East Howard. The article does not state what will be happening with the truck that's currently there. Normally, it states that there's a trade-in value to it. I don't see if that's going to happen here or not. Do we have a clarification on that?
Is the fire chief here? There he is. Okay, chief, can you respond to that, please?
The intent will be to trade, we're trading in both an engine and a ladder truck. The value won't be determined until the time of the sale comes up because they are older vehicles and their value in the market is not unfortunately what we would hope it would be.
Thank you, chief.
Any further debate? Yes, it's down in the middle here.
My name's Sandy McClardy, East Howard. I don't oppose this article, but I had a question. Would it be an option to just get a ladder truck, considering we have four pumper trucks? It's my understanding, one of the pumper trucks is so old that it needs to be replaced, and another pumper truck is a forestry truck, not so much of a road vehicle. But what would the cost difference between the quint and just a ladder? And could we go with a reduced number of pumper trucks? It seems four is a lot.
Chief, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, certainly. The purpose of this is to maintain pumping capacity, which is required by ISO, which is what drives the insurance rates. So while we could drop, well, we are in essence dropping a full pumper, we need the pumping capacity on the ladder truck to maintain our certification and our pumping ability. The other advantage to having four is when one engine goes out of service, we have another vehicle that is capable of being a pumper in that station. So if we drop down to three and one goes out of service, we potentially don't have the pumping capacity we need if there's a fire.
And do you know roughly the cost of just the ladder?
I don't know. It's not a significant difference. It would probably put it down below a million, but I can't give you an honest appraisal.
It wouldn't be half, 500?
No, absolutely not.
Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 19? Looks like you're ready for a vote. This is a borrowing, requires a 2/3 majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 20. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to fund the road maintenance program and all costs incidental and related thereto. And I'm not going to read the dead exclusion language. That will be in the motion that Mr. Chori will read. Mr. Chori.
Article 20. Fund the FY 2022 road maintenance program, requires a 2/3 vote. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $700,000 to fund the road maintenance program and all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $700,000 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. The appropriation authorized by this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitations of total taxes imposed by master under law, Chapter 59, 21(c), Proposition 2 1/2, the amounts required to pay the principal of and the interest on any borrowing authorized under this article. And further, in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs or issuance of such bonds and notes, may be applied to pay the project costs and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of such premium so applied.
All right, the motion under Article 20's been moved and seconded. It's $700,000, which is the amount that was in the warrant for the road maintenance program, and it's subject to a prop 2 1/2 dead exclusion vote at the ballot. Any debate on the motion? Yes, sir. Conroy, I believe.
Yeah, Gary Conroy, Bay Road. So, John, this is for you. These dead exclusions, how long do they stay on the books? And how long does it affect our tax rate?
That's a good question, Gary. I think, Carol, it all depends, I believe. You know, when we go out to bonding and stuff, the ratios that they negotiate at that point. I'm going to turn it over to Joe Powers to answer that, Gary.
Joe Powers, Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The quick answer, obviously, is until it's paid off, and that generally is anywhere between seven to 10 years.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 20? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Again, this is a borrowing, requires a 2/3 majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 21. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to purchase and equip the vehicles listed in the table below and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the vehicles listed in the table below if determined to be surplus property. I'm not going to read the entire table. Mr. Chori, motion?
Article 21. Purchase and equip the vehicles for Department of Public Works. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and further that the sum of $460,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article 21. It's $460,000 is proposed to be transferred from free cash for the vehicles listed in the table in the article. Any debate? Don't see any. I'm going to put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. Unanimous vote, and I so declare it. See if the town will vote to transfer from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund such sums of money that may be required to purchase and install studio cameras, lighting, video production, hardware, software, and network peripherals in multiple town hall or other municipal hearing room locations for improved public meeting coverage, subject to and pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53f and 3/4. Mr. Chori.
Article 22. The PEG Access and Cable Related Fund for Hearing Room and Studio Improvements. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and further that the sum of $99,250 be transferred from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund for this purpose.
Motion under 22 has been made and seconded. It's accept and adopt. The sum is the $99,254, and it's being transferred from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 23. See if the town will vote to authorize the Water and Wastewater Commission to acquire by purchase gift eminent domain or otherwise five parcels of land, all with an address of Zero Chatham Road, and then there's a description, which I'm not going to read entirely. It's about 7.6 acres. Said parcels to be placed under care, custody, control, and management of the Water and Wastewater Commission and held for wellhead and water supply protection purposes, and further to appropriate from certified retained earnings of the Water Enterprise Fund the sum of $175,000 for said acquisition, including all costs incidental and related thereto, provided, however, that this appropriation shall be reduced by the amount of any gift or grants received under the Cape Cod Commission DRI Grant Program or any other grant program made available to the town at the time of said acquisition, and further to authorize the Water and Wastewater Commission to apply for any such grants and to enter into all necessary agreements and to take such actions as may be necessary to carry out the purposes of the article. Mr. Chori.
Article 23. Land acquisitions for the protection of the wellhead and water supply. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and further to authorize the Water and Wastewater Commission to acquire by purchase gift eminent domain or otherwise five parcels of land, all with the address of Zero Chatham Road, identified as accessers, owners unknown parcels 43-E7-0, 43-E9-0, 43-E9-A-0, 43-E10-0, and 43-E12-0, consisting of 7.6 acres more or less. Said parcels to be placed under the care and custody and control and management of the Water and Wastewater Commission and held for wellhead and water supply protection purposes, and further to appropriate from retained earnings of the Water Enterprise Fund the sum of $175,000 for said acquisition, including all costs incidental and related thereto, provided, however, that said appropriation shall be reduced by the amount of any gifts or grants received under the Cape Cod Commission DRI Grant Program or any other grant program made available to the town at the time of said acquisition, and further to authorize the Water and Wastewater Commission to apply for any grants and to enter into any necessary agreements and to take action as may be necessary to carry out the purpose of this article.
Over here, a second. Motion's been made and seconded under Article 23. It mirrors what's in your warrant. Any debate? Seeing none, I'll put it to a vote. This requires a 2/3 majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 24. See if the town will vote to appropriate from certified retained earnings of the Water Enterprise Fund a sum of money to conduct, I've got to get on to the next page here, new source expiration of the town's water supply, including all costs incidental and related thereto. Mr. Chori.
Article 24. New source expiration for town water supply. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and the sum of $250,000 be transferred from retained earnings of the Water Enterprise Fund for this purpose.
Motion has been made and seconded under Article 24. It's accept and adopt. The sum is $250,000, and it's coming from the retained earnings of the Water Enterprise Fund. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And, I'm sorry, was somebody trying to get up? Is that it? All right. So we're going to stop the vote. I missed this person in the middle, and we'll go back to debate.
Get one over here, too. Thank you. Clara McClardy, East Howard. I'm concerned about how many volume, how many million gallons we already do pump from the aquifer, and I do not want to explore or increase the amount that we pump for water. I think we need to decrease irrigation and the way we use water instead.
Any further debate? Mr. Thompson, Water Commission. Want to use the microphone up here? Somebody, can you get him a mic?
Alan Thompson, I'm a water commissioner, and we need to do this exploration, and we also need to install new wells. The wells, five of the wells that we are running now go back to 1936, and, you know, at one time, at some time, they don't- at some time, they don't... they're limited. It's a long period of process of getting approval from DEP to create a new well, so if something happens to the old wells, we will not be pumping any amount as we do today. So, we need your support on this. It's for the future, and you'll see, as time goes on, more articles addressing the old age of the water department. The water department started in 1936, so give you an idea. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Further debate under Article 24, over here.
My name is Paula Miles. I live in North Harwich. I live in the Herring River watershed, and I'm concerned... I would like to know where the exploration is going to take place. We've had some serious issues with watershed quite near the river where I live. So, where is... where would this exploration in North Harwich be occurring?
Mr. Thompson, you want to answer that question? Where is the exploration proposed to occur?
The new exploration will be on the... above the Mid-Cape Highway. Where we stand now is everything that the town pumps from now is on the south... to the south side of the Mid-Cape Highway. I can change... if we had an oil spill, a tanker truck crash on the highway, problems like... issues like that, contamination could contaminate the wells. So, this would be above, or to the north side of the Mid-Cape Highway. So, it would be more in filtration and everything. We're going to the current North Harwich filtration plan, and it should not be affecting anybody at all pace.
So, it would not be affecting the river? It's not going to be the watershed of the river?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
No.
All right. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion under Article 24? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion under Article 24 is accept and adopt. The sum is $250,000. It's proposed to be transferred from retained earnings of the Water Enterprise Fund. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article 25. See if the town will vote to appropriate from certified retained earnings of the Water Enterprise Fund a sum of money for the design and engineering for the replacement of approximately 1.75 miles of water main replacement on Route 28 between Lower County Road and the Herring River Bridge, including all costs incidental and related thereto. Mr. Chori.
Article 25. Route 28 Water Main Replacement Design. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and further that the sum of $500,000 be transferred from retained earnings of the Water Enterprise Fund for this purpose.
Motion under Article 25 is accept and adopt. The sum is $500,000, and it's proposed to be transferred from retained earnings of the Water Enterprise Fund for this purpose. Any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 26. See if the town will vote to appropriate from certified retained earnings of the Water Enterprise Fund a sum of money to purchase, equip, and install a new generator for Station 8, including all costs incidental and related thereto. Mr. Chori.
Article 26. Station 8 Generator. I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and further that the sum of $50,000 be transferred from retained earnings of the Water Enterprise Fund for this purpose.
Motion under Article 26 is accept and adopt. It's proposed that $50,000 be transferred from retained earnings for this purpose. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 26, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 27. This is the first of the Community Preservation Act articles. See if the town will vote to appropriate the following sums of money from FY 2022 Estimated Annual Revenues of the Harwich Community Preservation Act Fund, as required under General Laws, Chapter 44 and Chapter 149, Section 298 of the Acts of 2004. A sum of money for the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space. A sum of money for the acquisition, preservation, restoration, rehabilitation of historic resources. Sum of money for the acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing. And a sum of money for the Community Preservation Act Fund FY 2022 Undesignated Fund Balance, including recreation, and to act fully thereon. Do I have a motion under Article 27?
Yes. Article 27. Appropriate sums of money for the FY 2022 Estimated Annual Revenues of the... revenues of the Community Preservation Act Fund. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the town transfer from FY 2022 Estimated Annual Revenues of the Community Preservations Act Fund to the following: the sum of $161,171 to the Community Housing Reserve Fund; the sum of $161,171 to the Open Space Reserve Fund; the sum of $161,171 to the Historical Preservation Reserve Fund; and the sum of $25,000 to the Undesignated Fund Balance for operating expenses.
All right. The motion's been made and seconded under Article 27, and it bears what's in your warrant in terms of appropriating funds to each one of those buckets in the Community Preservation Act program. I'm advised that the Community Preservation Committee has voted in support of this article. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. See if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Act Funds $51,692.06 from the Undesignated Fund Balance, and $181,357.09 from the Estimated Annual Revenue for the Fiscal Year 2022, for a total of $233,050 to fund the Land Bank Debt Service. Any funds left unspent from this article to be returned to the Community Preservation Act Funds, Undesignated Fund Balance, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 28. Fund Land Bank Debt Service. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
All right. The motion under Article 28 is accept and adopt as printed. Again, I'm advised that the Community Preservation Committee has voted to support this article. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 28, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 29. This is to fund miscellaneous community preservation projects that are under $50,000. They've been grouped into one article. I'm not going to read that whole chart. Mr. Chori, do you have a motion?
Article 29. Community Preservation Activities Under $50,000. I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the chart under Article 29 in the warrant.
All right. So, the motion under Article 29 is accept and adopt, and to move the chart as printed on page 26 of your warrant. And again, I'm advised that the Community Preservation Committee has voted to recommend all of those projects as listed in the chart and moved in the motion to the town meeting. Any debate? I'm going to put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 29, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Act Funds Estimated Annual Revenue for Fiscal Year 2022, $112,200 to support the East House Methodist Church Cemetery Gravestone Project. Any funds left unspent in this article ought to be returned to the Community Preservation Act Funds, Undesignated Fund Balance, and to act fully thereon.
Article 30. East Harwich Methodist Church Cemetery Gravestone Project. I move that this article be indefinitely postponed.
All right. So, there's a motion that this article be indefinitely postponed, and I've heard a question to my left. Why? Anybody want to respond to that? Mr. Chori is going to take a shot at it.
Yes, I will. We, as a committee, the Finance Committee, we decided to indefinitely postpone this article, because when we were discussing this, you know, a few weeks back, we had a couple questions that we feel that we needed to get answered, and we didn't get those questions answered at the time we took this vote. So, that's why we took the vote to indefinitely postpone this article. And the questions at that time, where one was, is who owns this cemetery? Is it owned by the town? Is it owned by the church? We didn't ever get an answer on that. Another question was, can CPC funds be used for a town... a project that is not associated with the town? This is being associated with the East Harwich Methodist Church. So, that... those questions were asked, and we did receive a partial answer that CPC funds could be used for a non-town entity, if you want to call that. But we never got an answer on who owns the cemetery, so that's why we voted, again, a few weeks back, to indefinitely postpone this article.
Does that answer your question, ma'am? You may. We'll get you a microphone.
Thank you. I'm Lori Moore. I live on Parallel Street. I am also a member of the Harwich United Methodist Church. Who owns the property? So, before this was printed, nobody in the town could look up and see who owns that property. I'll tell you right now, we've looked it up. The town owns the cemetery. The church maintains it and takes care of it. It's a mess. If anybody's been up there, it needs to be improved. Your other question of can CPC funds be used for a town project? I believe so, and that's why we're here, voting, because we're interested, town people. We need to go for it. Thank you.
Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In all deference to Ms. Moore, I'm a member of the Harwich United Methodist Church myself. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees. The care and custody of the cemetery, once the perpetual care funds were grouped together from a number of cemeteries to the Cemetery Commission, was given to the town. The underlying property is still owned by the Harwich United Methodist Church. The conference has confirmed that. There was never a transfer of the land, and actually, the church does not have the authority on its own to do that. It's part of a conference, and the conference has never transferred the jurisdiction. I've looked it up.
You have a motion under Article 32, indefinitely postponed. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. The article is indefinitely postponed. Article 31. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Act Funds $485,734.05 from the Historic Reserve, $664,265.04 from the Estimated Annual Revenue for Fiscal Year 2022, for a total appropriation of $1,150,000 to make structural improvements to Brooks Academy. Any funds left unspent from this article ought to be returned to the Community Preservation Act Funds Historic Reserve, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 31. Brooks Academy Structural Improvement Projects. I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
The motion under Article 31 is accept and adopt. I'm advised by the Community Preservation Committee that they have voted to recommend this article favorably to you. Is there any debate? Yes, sir. Somebody will get you a microphone, just a second.
Sandy McClardy, East Harwich. I support the preservation of this old historic building. I love old historic buildings. I followed the discussions at CPC, and I'm a little concerned about the cost. I know in the past, we underestimated costs, and that doesn't help anybody either. But being involved in construction and knowing some house lifters on the Cape, the $1.1 million to lift this, in my opinion, seems a bit high. My friend lifted the Orleans... what was it called? The Odd Fellows Hall in Orleans 15 years ago for $70,000, and he routinely doesn't charge enough, so it's not a... but anyway, that building is identical to the main part, with the exception of the part that swings out. My friend did a 10-foot basement at that building. I would like to see that number more in the $500,000 to $700,000. But I take these comments as I want to see this building preserved. Thank you.
Further debate? I see a hand way in the back.
Sebastian Mudry, West Harwich. I saw the progression of this changing from shoring up an existing stone foundation to an escalation to building a full basement. The cost equals that of the new quint. If the support was somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000 to support this old structure, I would support it. This is absurd. I have a crawl space. I can't afford to put in a full basement. We, as a town, cannot afford the luxury of doing so. I ask that this article be voted down. Please.
Further debate? A gentleman here to my left.
My name is David Spitz. I'm the Chair of the Brooks Academy Museum Commission. We serve under the Board of Selectmen and are responsible for making recommendations on the physical situation of this building. We came to CPC with things we wanted to do a couple years ago. It was suggested to us, we'd better check out the structural condition of this building first. We have now done that. We hired an engineer who was recommended... a structural engineer who was recommended to us based on his experience with historical buildings and with his experience with buildings on Cape Cod. One of the luxuries of living on Cape Cod is if, in the 1844, and again in the second part of the building, 60, 70 years later, if you do a stone foundation, you're going to be using Cape Cod stone, which is rounded Cape Cod stone, which is... does not have the same structural integrity as modern foundations will. It became... when this structural engineer came to look at our building, he said, "You've got a building that's in good shape. You also have a problem that will become serious if you do not address it." It has not become serious yet, but it may. How much will it cost? He gave us the cost to repair the foundation for approximately two-thirds of that building. In talking to everyone involved, we determined that we should come before you with the full eight-foot concrete foundation walls, and that, yes, that will allow creation of a basement under the balance of the building. Only about one-third of the base... of the building has a basement now. That's an area that we'll be able to use to support the functions of this building for another 175 years and more, and will be something we'll be very happy to have in the future. I'm hoping the first gentleman was right, that the cost is too high. The way we went about it is our structural engineer worked with a Cape Cod contract excavator who does this sort of work, and does these sort of concrete foundations. He's from Born. We will go out and get bids at a... once this project is allowed to go forward, but we were able to develop full cost estimates so that we would have a number to bring to this group today. All of the numbers add 20 percent... All of the numbers add 20% for, for design and engineering, 25% for construction engine, contingency, so that the numbers that the Cape Cod contractor provided us, to us, are increased by 50% to deal with the type of cost overruns that have happened in many previous projects and that we're hoping to avoid. I hope for your support today. Thank you.
Further debate? Mr. McManus, Selectman McManus. And I should have mentioned at the outset, the Community Preservation Committee has voted to recommend this article to you.
As a past Chairman of the Brooks Academy Museum Commission, I stand before you to support this article. I think the important point of that, the title of the commission is museum. This town has voted to preserve Brooks Academy, to operate as a museum of the town's history and artifacts. This project, not only in terms of providing a foundation that will maintain and support into the future this important historical structure of our town, but also will provide the added space where to continue in its function as a museum. A museum is a repository of artifacts, documents, pieces of our history. If you go and look at the museum now, much of the area that should be open to the public to display those items is being used for storage because they have such limited space. The basement that would be made for this, in this project, would provide the space to store all those items, opening up the upstairs areas for display of the materials, for having shows of different aspects of the town's history, to better, make it a better place for us to appreciate and understand our town's history. I urge you to support this article.
Further debate on the motion under Article 31? Yes, sir, over here.
Duncan Berry, Planning Board Chairman, West Harwich. I would like to speak in support of this. Those of you who have had the opportunity to see the basement of the Brooks Academy Building will know that it may be a 19th century structure, but that is a medieval basement. It needs significant attention. This is direly needed, and I would encourage you all to support the maintenance of what is probably the most iconic, single civic structure in our town. Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 31? It's accept and adopt as printed. I see somebody in the non-voting section. Can you tell me who it is?
Hi, my name is Marie Zahn. I'm the Museum Director for the Brooks Academy Museum.
Okay, Marie, hold on just one second. Marie is not a voter, so our rules of procedure provide that they can address the meeting, provided there's no objection. Do I hear any objection? Hearing none? Go ahead.
Thank you very much. So as was stated, the significance of Brooks Academy to the town of Harwich cannot be overstated. Anyone who has seen the town seal knows Brooks Academy. The building itself functions as a historical museum, displaying artifacts, photos, and sharing centuries of stories of the people integral to the fabric of Harwich and Cape Cod. The Harwich Historical Society, in agreement with the town, has used the building as a museum, celebrating Harwich history, including Cape Cod's largest exhibit on the history of local cranberry culture. I'm sure many of you here today remember elementary school trips to see the big display of farming and harvesting cranberries, and I know that many remember going to elementary school and high school in the building before that. Our exhibits are just some of the resources the society maintains. The Josiah Payne Collection of historical documents gathers together centuries of Harwich history, from personal memories to genealogical records, and that's just one part of the resources available to visitors in our research library. The museum is one of the landmarks in the historical district of Harwich Center, and a draw for year-round and seasonal residents and tourists alike, wanting to know more about their historical homes, family records, and even see their grandparents' yearbook photos or a diary written in, written in the 1800s. Brooks Academy is unique in that we are able to preserve and share the history of Harwich in a building that itself is such an important part of the town's history. The facts and figures of the town have been and will be recorded for centuries, but who saves the stories, the memories, the feelings of the town? What is Harwich without the people who live here? The legacy of the Harwich Historical Society is to keep your stories, your grandmother's stories, your personal histories alive. What we do is hold on to these memories and physical tangible pieces of history so that future generations can know us, to know how we felt and what we did, and that we were here. Today, we have the opportunity to make a commitment to preserving the history of Harwich by preserving the history of Brooks Academy itself. An approval of these funds means that we, as a society, will be able to continue and expand our mission of collecting, preserving, and exhibiting Harwich history for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate under Article 31? Lori? Oh, okay. Anyone else? I don't see anyone.
I'm sorry?
Oh, over here. I'm sorry. Missed you. By the way, while the microphone's going over there, it wasn't elementary school or high school. I went to seventh grade there. They used to just have one year there, seventh grade. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Clara McLarty, East Harwich. I just wanted to clarify that we are not debating the beauty, importance of the building or the historical society, but the cost of adding a basement, which may not be absolutely necessary for the integrity of the building. And so I'm going to oppose this.
Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I want to speak very briefly to what a previous speaker and proponent had talked about, and that is the contingency costs that are incorporated within this article. That is a deliberate act, if I can say it that way, of administration, finance, and the proponents. What we're asking for, for this dollar amount, includes those contingencies so the vote today can be the first and last vote that this Assembly will be asked for, for the money to do the project. In other words, we do not expect to come back to you for more money. We've asked for the highest amount that we believe is, is warranted, and as the Chair and others of CPC will remind us, whatever is not spent is returned back to community preservation. Having said that, specifically to the question of the basement, this is anticipated, anticipated in our lifetimes to be the last time that we impact upon that basement, and if we do not avail ourselves of the opportunity while we are doing this work to expand that basement, we shall never have that opportunity again. So again, the overriding ethic, if you will, of this project is to get into it, get into it completely and fully, and be done with it. For those reasons, I urge your support of this article. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion under Article 31, which is accept and adopt? Yes, sir, over here, to the right.
Richard Houston. I just wanted to remind...
Couldn't recognize you, Mr. Houston, behind that mask.
Yeah, we're all having that problem.
Yes.
I just wanted to remind people that the CPC money can only be spent on those categories of the stated legislation. This money can't be spent or refunded to the taxpayers. Part of the money has to be spent on historical preservation. There's a pool of money, and it can't be refunded. This, I can't think of a better use of the designated historical funds than on this project. Thank you.
Any further debate? Yes, sir, in the back.
Wayne Eaton, South Harwich. The only thing I can say is, Brooks Academy should be taken care of, and if it isn't, it will go away at the Exchange Building.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. So the motion on Article 31 is accept and adopt as printed. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion carries. Article 32. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Funds $50,000 from the estimated annual revenue for fiscal 2022 to fund the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust Housing Coordinator. Any funds left unspent from this article ought to be returned to CPA Act Fund's housing reserve and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 32. Fund a part-time housing coordinator. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motions are made under Article 32 to accept and adopt as printed. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 33. I will tell you that I was, I received, when the meeting started this morning, a message and a note from the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. They met on this article again last evening. They voted to reconsider their prior recommendation in favor of it and voted to not support the article. So there is no favorable CPC recommendation on this article. Without a favorable CPC recommendation, the town can't appropriate CPC funds under this article. As a result, my understanding is, there's no positive motion, and I will recognize Mr. Chori for the purposes of making a motion to indefinitely postpone.
Article 33. Hinkley's Pond Watershed Preservation Project. I move this article be indefinitely postponed.
Yes, sir. Move in second of that Article 33 be indefinitely postponed. Any debate? So it's... Yes, sir. Are you in a position to answer that? I'm sorry. Yeah, do you want to answer the question that's been raised, is why the change in the recommendation? Anybody want to address the question of why there's been a change in the Community Preservation Committee recommendation?
This, this project was originally brought up, I believe, late last summer, early fall. It's a project that would involve the state, the Conservation Trust of the town, and the landowner. It's a very complex project to put in, given a number of moving parts in structuring the real estate deal. The parts of that kept on changing up until as late as last night, and the Community Preservation Commission, or Committee, at that time, basically came to the conclusion that they didn't have enough adequate information to meet their obligation as fiduciaries of the town to make a positive recommendation on this project. They all support the project and its concept, but there were just too many unanswered questions for them to feel that they could move ahead.
If, Mr. ...
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, if I may ask my questions, Peter...
You may. And remember, the motion before the floor is indefinitely postponed, so the debate is, why shouldn't this be indefinitely postponed?
That's exactly my question, and...
And, and keep in mind, we have no favorable Community Preservation Committee recommendation, so the Committee, so the meeting cannot appropriate the money.
But I do have a couple of questions, if I may.
Go ahead.
Peter Dubacher of Edith Grove Road. So this item has been on the, in the public domain for about a year, and I wonder why, after a year, can we not come to some consensus of what this ought to be all about? So I'd like to have some details, if I may. Just the fact that we don't have the details is a bit puzzling to me. Also, does Mr. Jenkins's, Mr. Jenkins, who was so generous to offer this area to the Harwich Conservation Trust and the town of Harwich, what happens to his offer? Will that be withdrawn? Is there a deadline for his offer? And I think this could be a lost opportunity for the town of Harwich if we do not act now. And I know exactly what you're saying, that the motion will not be entertained, but I, as a citizen of Harwich, am very frustrated, and I am afraid to place this whole discussion in danger.
Any further comments or debate on the motion under Article 33, which is indefinite
Is this working?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I'm still Sebastian Mudry of West Harwich.
Okay, I'm sorry, didn't see you back there.
I cannot believe that we can spend a million dollars for a basement and not conserve land which we may lose, this 31 acres. It's absurd to postpone this indefinitely. It's absurd to postpone this for five minutes. We have enough information to support this. Harwich Conservation Trust needs to be supported. The town needs to be supported. We need to save this land. This is our present and our future, not just our past. This is everything, past, present, and future, and we should not indefinitely postpone. We can approve this right now as a town, and that ISO move.
Well, that motion's out of order, sir. The motion on the floor is indefinite postponement. Is there any further debate?
Hi, I'm Deborah First.
Yes.
And I am in shock. And I was so happy with the prospect, the prospect of having this preserved. I want to know, if we vote not to indefinitely postpone this, what will happen? Will the Community Preservation Act, the funds, can they change their mind and then give the money? I mean, if, what option do we have besides postponing this? If we vote not to postpone it?
So, good questions. I think I'll ask our Town Council, John Giorgio, to respond to that.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. If this project, if it is indefinitely postponed today, and that is your only option based upon the negative recommendation of the CPC, it can be brought back at any time to a future town meeting, as long as the Community Preservation Committee recommends it at that time.
You're saying that we don't have an option to not postpone it, so why are we voting? That's not fair. We have the right to say we don't want to postpone this. What I'm asking is, if we do not postpone it, and we give our intentions, we still have a capability of getting it, instead of it being sold privately or whatever. I don't want to wait until next year for a town meeting. That may be too late. I want to know what our options are now. Can they change their mind if they get their answers met in the next two weeks?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. The Community Preservation Act is very clear that town meeting can only act after a positive recommendation from the CPC. As we stand here today, this project has a negative recommendation from the CPC. So you cannot... So you cannot act to approve this project today at this town meeting. If the Community Preservation Committee obtains answers to its questions which they had last night and if they move to then recommend the project, a special town meeting could potentially be called or it could be placed on a warrant for a future special town meeting in the fall and the body can act on it at that time, but not before.
Further debate, Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not sure if there's anybody here that was more in support of this than, than myself. But having said that, I need to clarify a few things for you folks. First of all, this is but one parcel of a much larger sale that's being made between Mr. Jenkins and the Conservation Trust, the state and the Town of Harwich. As such, there were concerns last night from the CPC about the appraisal that was received because this started out as a contribution to the entire purchase of all of the bog and the uplands that surround it. What we had originally devolved into was that the town would take a little more than an acre so that we could use that for access to, for recreational purposes to the pond. It's a very complex situation. I guarantee you, the Board of Selectmen originally supported it. I don't get the sense that the CPC is against it except for the fact that too many things came at the 11th hour. I guarantee that we're going to take this up again, and I can also tell you that it's not the entire purchase for the property. So we're just one piece, one cog in the entire mechanism. We can potentially bring this back. You've heard that before. And I expect that when these things are resolved, we will bring it back.
So we have a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 33, and let me tell you that just to what Mr. Howell just commented. Article 33 only describes one small piece of the 33 acres. That's all that was before the town meeting. The 33 acres is not before the town meeting, just one small parcel. And since we don't have a favorable CPC recommendation, as Town Council has said, we can't appropriate the money. So is there any further debate on the motion to indefinitely postpone? In the middle.
Bob Weiser, Birch Drive. I hope that we will vote against the motion just to make sure that it's clear that the body of the town meeting is opposed to anything that would lead to that entire parcel of land at the corner of Headwaters Drive and 124, ending up in the commercial real estate market. I'm pretty sure that that is what people are speaking to when they're concerned about this. And the details about the CPC recommendation at this particular moment is not really what people are concerned about. It's not what I'm concerned about. It's the long-term picture of that corner. I happen to live in that neighborhood. I do not want to see the potential commercial results of a failure of our town to find a way to see to it that the bog there is preserved in some form for conservation purposes rather than becoming a commercial real estate development. Thank you.
Just so you know, the implications of turning down indefinite postponement are that we're back to the article for which nobody can make a positive motion. So that's the dilemma we find ourselves in procedurally because this is CPC funds. I had a woman right here, and then I'll go to you, ma'am. You got to use a microphone. Let me get one to you.
Thank you. Carol Drake of Bittersweet Lane. Is on the map that's in the warrant, does that explain where this little piece of land was?
Yeah, on page...
Because it was confusing. I assumed it was the whole thing.
On page 30. If you go to page 30 in your warrant, there is a map. There is a small piece of property that runs parallel along the bike trail. It's called Tax Map 81G1. A long, thin piece. That's the only piece that's addressed in this article. None of the other properties are addressed in this article.
Okay, I was under a misconception.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is not the piece out on Headwaters. This is the piece that runs along the bike trail. That's all that's before, in this article. Yes, ma'am.
I asked to move the question.
Do I hear a second? Okay, so the motions are made to move the question, which means to terminate debate. It's a non... It's a non-debatable motion. That's why I can't have you make a comment, Larry. And it requires a four-fifth majority to pass. So all those in favor of terminating debate, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. If it doesn't get a unanimous vote, unfortunately, I have to take a standing count for which I'll appoint tellers if I need to. So let's try one more time. All those in favor of terminating debate on the motion to indefinitely postpone, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote. We'll now go directly to the motion on indefinite postponement. All those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 33, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. The article's indefinitely postponed. Article 34. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Act Funds $150,000 from estimated annual revenue for fiscal year 2022 to fund the Natural Heritage Trail Project, including the creation of a wheelchair-accessible trail loop off Bank Street for open space and recreational purposes, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a grant agreement with the Howard Conservation Trust, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire permanent restriction on said land. Any spent funds left unspent from this article are to be returned to the Community Preservation Act Funds' undesignated fund balance and to act fully thereon. Do I have a positive motion?
Yes, Article 35.
That's 34.
34, excuse me. Article 34, Harwich Natural Heritage Trail Project. I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's to move and second to that Article 34 be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote and I so declare it. Article 35. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Fund Act Funds $125,000 from estimated annual revenue for fiscal year 2022 to fund the Brooks Park Lighting Project. Any funds left unspent from this article are to be returned to the Community Preservation Act Funds' undesignated fund balance and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 35, Brooks Park Lighting Project. I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion made and second under Article 35 to accept and adopt as printed. Is there any debate? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Clara McClardy, East Harwich. We can't say yes without saying no to something else. And the thing with lighting is insects and pollinators. I'm really concerned about them. And the more we have lights on at night, especially these powerful sort of lights that they use on a large area, we kill a whole bunch of insects. And we are undergoing an insect apocalypse. A whole lot of people think it would be nice to have no bugs, but it wouldn't be nice at all. It would be our doom. Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 35? Community Preservation Committee does recommend favorably on this. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye. Oh, wait a minute. Gentlemen in the back. My apologies, I didn't see you, sir.
I appreciate in the past that there has been excellent explanations or rationale in support of articles. There is no rationale or explanation for this one. And I agree with the last speaker who spoke in defense of pollinators and other critters that are attracted to lights. And we also cause light pollution. The more lights, outdoor lights that we have, the less we can see the stars. So I vote against this motion.
So the, the previous speaker's observation is correct. There is a lack of explanation. Mr. Powers, do you want to fill that in?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll, I'll try to begin with an explanation. I will defer to my colleagues that have worked on this project. However, beginning of the explanation is, this is, this ties into this article today to what I spoke earlier in a previous article. Meaning, we're trying to work to not continue to bring things back time and again for more funding. This is a legacy project, if you will, that goes back several years with several iterations, as you know. But this particular article, the lighting project, the amounts being requested today are intended to finalize that project at Brooks Park on the lights themselves. If memory serves correctly, we're going back to an article that was first adopted at town meeting in May of 2019 for about $380,000 or thereabouts. The sums were insufficient in that they did not factor in contingencies. They did not factor in design costs, engineering costs and costs related to procurement. So that is the intention of this article, is to complete the project and be done with that project. As said earlier, any funds that are left unspent will be returned to Community Preservation. For these reasons and many more, I urge your adoption of the article. Thank you.
Mr. McManus, you want to say something? Any further debate on the motion under Article 35, which is accept and adopt? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The motion carries. Article 36. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Act Funds $83,500 from estimated annual revenue for fiscal year 2022 to fund the rehabilitation and restoration of San Pond, which is a recreational facility owned by the Town of Harwich. Any funds left unspent from this article ought to be returned to the CPA Act Funds' undesignated fund balance. Mr. Chori.
Article 36, San Pond Restoration, Revitalization Project. I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motions are made under Article 36 that the article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. Is there any debate? I should tell you CPC has recommended favorably. Yes, ma'am, in the back. Somebody get her microphone? I think there's one on its way.
Deborah First. I, there's no explanation in this one either, and I do have several questions. It says rehabilitation and restoration of San Pond. There has been some discussion among people in Harwich about this. And I would like to know if this is just the bathrooms and clearing dead debris around the pond and making sure that the water is clean and maybe fixing up some of the potholes in the parking lot. Does this include the playground that was mentioned by some people? I'm not sure what exactly this means because there's no explanation of what this $83,000 is for.
In the bleachers, do you answer that?
Hi, my name is Eric Beebe. I'm the Recreation Director for the Town of Harwich.
And you're not a voter?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Any objection to hearing from Mr. Beebe, who's the Recreation Director, who's going to respond to his first question? Hearing none. Mr. Beebe.
Thank you very much. This project, the restroom project for San Pond was approved at a previous town meeting. That should be getting put in very soon for the pond. This project this year includes some playground equipment. We do not intend a full playground by any means. It would include a swing set, a couple spinners for the kids and the required safety surfacing for the equipment. It would also include a new split rail fence to replace the one that is currently there. The removal of the boathouse that is currently there, that is beyond repair, the repairs would cost more than this whole project. It would also include some picnic tables at the area and the removal of only dead trees. We are not looking to change the nature of the area. We're just looking to provide another recreational opportunity at a valuable town asset. It occurred to us when we were coming up with the concept for this project that all our recreational facilities right now, other than beaches, are on Oak Street. Fields, parks, courts, tennis courts, basketball courts, everything's on Oak Street. And when we did begin our Brooks Park project a couple of years ago, we did a survey in town of what kind of recreational opportunities people would like to see in town. And our number one result was playgrounds. But again, we're not intending to put in a whole playground, just a couple pieces of equipment for the kids down there to kind of enhance the area as we have seen it decline in recent years. So that's, that's the details of the project and nothing else.
Ms. First.
Yes. Thank you, Eric. I love San Pond. It's really natural. And when I take my grandchildren there, they get a sense of being in nature. And I want to stress that, you know, last town meeting, we voted for a playground at Harwich Elementary. That's going to be a big playground. San Pond, I hope, will remain natural and not a playground. I don't feel we need another playground. We need more nature. And to put a swing when they can go swimming or they can play with things in nature to me is more important than a playground. So maybe you can reduce it by not putting in a lot of playground. That's my objection. Thank you.
Further debate, Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to repeat what's printed in the, your warrant. The voted position of the Board of Selectmen was indefinite postponement. It was our understanding that there's going to be two spinners. Those are the things that, you know, whirl around with kids on them and a swing set associated with this and that it was going to take up a significant percentage of the real estate there. On that basis, we did not vote to support this. I wanted to emphasize that.
I also see that there were three nays in the Finance...
I'm sorry, you're not recognized, Ms. First. Is there anyone else who wants to say anything? If there isn't, I'll go back to Ms. First. Okay. Ms. First, go ahead. You have the floor again.
I also see there were three nays in the Finance Committee. Can that, can be explained?
Anyone from Finance Committee want to explain their negative vote?
Yeah, this is Dale Kennedy on the Finance Committee. I agree with you. I don't think we need another playground. We've got a nice facility being built at the elementary school. And I feel like the pond should be for swimming.
Further debate, Mr. McManus?
Two, two things. One, it is a nice playground that's going to be built at the elementary school, but it's also not because it's being built at the elementary school, it's not available during the... school, it's not available during the, uh, other than the summertime during the rest of the year, it's not available for the public to use. Um, and I would ask if we could, Director, Recreation Director could describe the square footage that would be taken up by the, uh, playground equipment?
Mr. Beebe, can you respond to that? The area that would be taken up by the playground equipment you described?
Yes, I don't have the exact square footage with me, but it would be the area right where the current boathouse is now. Uh, that would be taken down, and it would be that area and just behind it. It would not be a significant area of, of the total San Pond area. It wouldn't include any of the beach area, and we, we would take down as little trees as possible. And like I said, we don't plan on taking down anything healthy. It would only be dead trees taken down. We're going to work around everything else.
Any further debate? Yes, right here on the left.
Hi, I'm Peggy Gabor. Um, Long Pond Drive. When you break out the costs of this project, uh, there's about $15,000 that is really general maintenance work that should be coming out of the Rec Commission's revolving fund. Um, so the rest of the money is for playground. It's not just an accessory to the restoration work they want to do. They actually, most of the money is for the playground. So I vote no on this.
Any further debate? Yes, in the middle? Mr. McGarry?
Clara McClarty, thank you. I am sounding like the old crank today, but think that our whole culture is, um, we're over-consuming, so we have to start saying no. We can't possibly meet the crisis of our day that the way we live is devouring the resources of the earth at an unsustainable rate without starting to say no to something. I have five kids, ages six to 14. We spend a whole lot of time outside. They are sometimes a little bit excited by playground equipment, of course, at the younger ages. But playgrounds are not that important in the scheme of things. And they're made of plastic, a whole lot of plastic and some metal, and they have to put this rubberized stuff down for safety reasons on the ground. So right next to a pond, that rubberized stuff is, um, leaching into the water with every rain event. Those plastic structures are made with petrochemicals. They're going to be disposed of, and recycling is not an accurate term. It's really extended use. And eventually, there will be no more use for that plastic, and some future generations will probably drink it in their water. And I think it's time that we need to just start saying no to some of these things. We can't possibly live responsibly and just do what we've been doing all along. We have to start changing and saying no for the sake of the earth and the future generations. Thank you.
Any further debate? Yes, you're, uh, right next to you there.
Sandy McClarty, East Howard. It's my understanding that the new playground being built at the school could be used after school hours or when school is not in session. Um, Mr. Ed McManus stated that it would only be in the summer season that that playground could be used, and I wonder if someone could just clarify my understanding on that.
Mr. Beebe, are you aware of what the restrictions are on the playground at the school? Whether it can be used after school hours for the public or just in the summer for the public?
Yeah, it's my understanding, um, obviously it wouldn't be able to be used during school hours, um, and it would not be able to be used during any school activities that are going on. Um, so if there's after-school programs going on, um, I'm not sure if there's any summer school programs, any, uh, school activities occurring, uh, the public wouldn't be able to come on school grounds to use the playground. That is my understanding.
Okay, any further debate on Article 36? I think we're ready for a vote. The motion is that the article be accepted and adopted as printed. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. The motion did not carry. Article 37. This is a proposed amendment to the Town Charter, and I'm not going to read it in its entirety. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to review it. The changes are proposed in bold. Do I have a positive motion on this?
Yes, Article 37. amend the, amend the code of the town of Howard Charter to amend Chapter 9, Section 6. I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's a movement seconded that Article 37 be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. It's a proposed amendment to the Charter, uh, and this is the beginning of the process, and this requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 38. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant a permanent easement to Calco Partnership, DPA Verizon Wireless in, on, or under a portion of town-owned property located on Harbor Road and identified by Assessus Map 15 U23, which portion is approximately shown as approximate area of utility easement on a sketch plan entitled Site Plan Howard SC13 MA, prepared by Tilson and on file with the town clerk. For the purpose of installing and maintaining lines and cables to serve the communications equipment to be located on a utility pole by Calco Partnership on such terms and conditions and for such consideration, which may be nominal consideration as the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate. Mr. Chori?
Article 38. Grant a permanent easement to Calco Partnership on Harbor Road, and move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the article.
So the motions were made under Article 38 and seconded that it be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 39. See if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Howard zoning, uh, 24 West Howard Special District by adding a new section, 325-160, as follows. 325-160 Design Guidelines. For the purpose of this section, the Howard Planning Board after public hearings shall adopt West Howard Special District Site and Architectural Design Guidelines, which shall constitute rules and regulations guiding historic structures and new construction within the WHSD and to act fully thereon.
Article 39. amend zoning article 27 by adding a new section, a section 325-160 Design Guidelines. I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
All right, the motion under Article 39 is accept and adopt as printed. Do I have a planning board report on this? Mr. Berry here, Chairman of the Planning Board?
Duncan Berry, Chairman of the Planning Board. Uh, the report is as of April 27, 2021, regarding the final planning board report on the proposed zoning amendment, Article 39. On Tuesday, April 13, 2021, the planning board held a duly posted notice public hearing via remote participation on this proposed zoning amendment. All members of the public having an interest in the proposed article were welcome to submit comment for the record. Hearing no questions or comments from the public, the board closed the public hearing, and the planning board voted unanimously, seven to zero to zero via roll call, to approve the proposed zoning amendment and recommend that this article be adopted at town meeting. Members present and voting in the affirmative, Duncan Berry, Joe McParland, Mary Maslowski, Dave Harris, Craig Chadwick, Bill Stoltz, and alternate Arthur Rouse, uh, respectfully submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Did you want to address this article, Mr. Berry, while you were up, or?
Yes, just to say that this formalizes the intent in the language adopted by town meeting last year.
Any further debate on this proposed zoning amendment? Yes, uh, Larry?
Sandy McClarty, East Howard. I support this article for the West Howard DCPC. Although, just, uh, an observation, the proposed new article 325-160, I looked for it, it doesn't exist. Um, and I asked around town. I did get some draft language. I was very concerned about any zoning changes as, uh, last town meeting, uh, there was a zoning change. We asked questions, and lo and behold, developers were allowed to expand the Royal, um, which is not what we expected. And so, looking into this one, it looks like there could be some use changes in this 325-160. But in reading the intent of the article, it's to preserve the historic nature, which my wife and I fully support. And so I will be voting to support this. I just wish there was a little more clarity when we talk about big zoning changes. There is a threat from developers to this town, in my opinion, and we should work really hard to clarify any zoning changes for future. Thank you.
Mr. Berry, do you want to comment on that?
Just a quick comment, yes. Thank you, sir. Just to say that this is essentially a document that illustrates but does not offer any changes. It illustrates the language. So in other words, to show what a setback is, we have a three-dimensional diagram or series of diagrams developed by the Cape Cod Commission with language that is taken from other, uh, design guidelines in the Commonwealth. It's kind of a best practices thing, and the other towns in the Cape are very interested in what we're doing here, um, just as a matter of clarification. So, thank you.
The, the article actually just enables the planning board to promulgate these design guidelines. So what you're doing is authorizing the planning board to promulgate design guidelines under that section. Any further debate? Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As the moderator pointed out, uh, you don't have anything in front of you that actually pertains to this article. They're going to be promulgating that. Uh, I have had a discussion with the town planner, uh, over this. Uh, I was always involved with the DCPC from the very beginning, and I know the residents of the area asked for it. It's not a zoning change for the town. It's a zoning change for the corridor, uh, from Division Street, roughly, uh, to the Herring River. The only thing that I will, uh, use the bully pulpit for here is to say that we need to do a better job when we actually get down to the regulations than just opening and closing a hearing in three minutes. We, we need to be able to make this a big effort for community involvement for the use tables so that everybody can feel satisfied that they were participating in this and it really came from below, not from, uh, on high. So, and as, as we move forward, Mr. Berry, I'm sure that you're going to be committed to that, but we need to make an affirmative outreach.
Absolutely.
Okay, any further debate on the motion under Article 39, which is to accept and adopt the proposed zoning change? Looks like you're ready for a vote. This is zoning amendment requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 40. Turn the page here. My fingers are getting to the point where I'm having difficulty turning these pages. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to make necessary repairs to the roof of the building at Five Bell's Neck Road and to act fully thereon. Uh, is there a positive?
Article, Article 40, funds for the repair roof, roof, excuse me, roof repairs at Five Bell's Neck Road. I move this article to be definitely postponed.
Before I take a definite postponement, does anybody have a positive motion, Mr. McManus?
I move that Article 40 funds for roof repairs at Five Bell's Neck Road. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Okay, so we have a positive motion under Article 40. Uh, the way that works is if the Finance Committee does not have a positive motion, then I go and check and see whether anybody has it before I take a definite postponement, and that's what occurred here. So with that positive motion, I'll recognize the maker, Mr. McManus.
Some of you may find this a confusing article, given the action we took earlier at this town meeting, which was to, uh, authorize the selectmen to put the property up for sale. Um, also in that article, however, that we passed is intent of, to ensuring that the, uh, the structure, which is the old West Howard School Building, be preserved as a, one of the historical landmark structures of the town. Previous, uh, town meetings, the overwhelming sentiment has always been to ensure that this structure be preserved. Um, and I'm asking that this, this item be passed, um, because, you know, just because we've authorized that to be put up for sale by the, the town, uh, the Board of Selectmen, doesn't mean it's going to happen anytime soon. Uh, several years ago, we authorized the sale of the property of the old fire station on Bank Street. We still haven't gotten through the, um, conservation questions that were raised to be able to do that. My concern is, given the structure, the condition of the roof, if this does go on for several years before we can actually put it to sale and find a buyer, um, the damage that will be caused to the structure by the time it is sold would basically turn it into a tear down. And I'm concerned that that historical landmark structure of, of the, uh, town would be lost forever at that point. So if the damage to the roof continues on and we don't seem to be able to move quickly to get the, get the sale gone to a person who's going to preserve it, that I think the town needs to have the resources to do the repairs to the roof to make sure that it's still, there's still something there to sell and preserve.
Yeah, don't go away. So, uh, Mr. McManus, in your motion, which was to accept and adopt, you didn't make any appropriation.
Oh.
So, um...
I thought the, the article had...
No, it just has an estimate.
Oh.
So I'm suggesting that you add language to your motion, which is accept and adopt as printed, and to transfer the sum of $50,000 in free cash for this purpose. Is that the amendment?
Yes, it is.
Would you like to make?
Yes, it is.
Would you like to second the amendment? Is there any debate on the amendment to the motion? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the amendments will signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. All right, the motion, uh, that carries, so the motion is now amended. So we're still on Article 40. The motion before you is accept and adopt, and it now has an appropriation of $50,000 for this purpose to be transferred for free cash. Further debate on the main motion as amended? Yes, sir? Mr. Conroy?
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, I'm somewhat confused. We're selling this building. Um, are there contingencies that we had, the buyer has to preserve the building? Uh, and if not, why are we spending $50,000 on something we're trying to sell?
Now, the article, as I recall it, had a provision in it that, um, at the selectmen's option, they could require a preservation, historic preservation restriction to be placed on the building at the time of sale. I, I believe was the way it was voted. Mr. McManus is, is nodding yes. Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion under Article 40 is that it be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and to transfer the sum of $50,000 in free cash for this purpose. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion carries. Yes. Uh, you can get a count if there's, uh, seven people that join you that... Looks like I got seven people, so I'm going to have to appoint tellers. Who would like to volunteer to be a teller? I need four. Lori, if you want to come up? Tom here? Tom Evans? Okay. I need two more. I can't tell who you are, but come on up.
Come on account. No, no, no.
Mary Ellen, come on up, Mary Ellen. I'll go over to the town clerk's, um, table here. I'm going to sway you in. I need one more. Anybody volunteering? Mr. DeBacher?
I have no idea how I feel about this.
We're going, Rick.
This would have been the first town meeting I've ever done where we didn't have a standing Okay, so we're going to take the standing count that was requested on Article 40. Let me just get back so we can put it in perspective. Article 40 was the Five Bell's Neck, the repairs, and the motion was accept and adopt and transfer $50,000 from free cash for that purpose. So, all those in favor of the motion, in favor of the motion, please rise, hold up your voter card. Anyone in favor, stand up, hold your voter card. How many you got, Lori? How many you got, Lori? Lori, how many? How many do you have?
Four.
Tom? Mary Ellen is still counting. Forty-one? Okay, if you're adding along with me, I like it when everybody hears the same numbers I do. There was a one to my right, four to my left, fifteen on this side, and forty-one. Those were the four counts, if you keep a track. Anyone opposed to the motion under Article 40? All those opposed, please rise, hold up your voter card, and we'll count you. Tellers, count the same sections. Thirteen. So, so far, if you're keeping track, you had five to my right, one to my left, and thirteen on this side. Okay, those in favor of the motion, sixty-one, those in opposition, forty-one, the motion did carry, so we'll move on to Article 41. See if the town will vote to amend the Departmental Revolving Funds Bylaw, Section 1-8 of the Town Code. The language to be added is shown underlined, and the tax are to act fully thereon, and there's the underline under the revenue source for conservation. Mr. Chori?
Article 41, amend the Code of Harwich General Bylaws, Chapter 8, Department Revolving Funds, Section 8-1, Funds Established. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Second? So, I move second that Article 41 be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Yes, ma'am. Somebody get a mic over here, great.
Noreen Donahue, head waters, how much revenue is usually generated by this particular fee?
The fee that's proposed to be added?
Yes.
Is the conservation agent? Is that you waving a hand, Amy?
That is me.
Okay. Amy, you a voter?
I am not a citizen of the town.
Okay. Any objection to Amy, the conservation agent, answering the question? Hearing none, Amy. So, the question, Amy, is the language that we're proposing to add as a revenue source, what's the estimated revenues that come out of that on a yearly basis?
Well, I can just tell you that our revenue currently for the wetlands fund is anywhere between five and $10,000 a year.
Okay.
And projected, this is only going to be used in rare and unusual circumstances when a project that comes before the Conservation Commission, which is anything, any activity within 100 feet of a wetland or in a wetland itself, when a project meets all of our other standards, bylaws, and regulations that the Conservation Commission has, but cannot meet our mitigation requirement, then in that instance mitigation, or in lieu fees, would be contemplated by the Commission, and it's in the amount of $4 per square foot, and those funds would go into this account and only be used for wetland restoration and rehabilitation.
Is there any idea, I mean, could you give an estimate? That was really the question as to what we thought.
Unfortunately, I can't...
You can't, yeah, I didn't think so.
...give an estimate. I can just state that it is very rare that projects would come in front of us that couldn't meet mitigation, but also wouldn't have an adverse impact. We just wanted to give another option for property owners to explore in order to mitigate for the activities they wish to do on their property, and unfortunately, I do not have a estimate for that revenue at this time.
Okay. It sounds like, Noreen, that this is just a potential revenue source, and if it comes in, they wanted to make sure it stayed in the conservation fund.
Could I have a follow-up?
You certainly may.
Thank you. Just briefly, this town, for the size of the town, I feel has, you know, so many revolving funds. We've all talked about it for many, many years, and each one of them, you know, for a good reason, whittles away at the amount of resources and monies coming into our general funds to pay for all of those other things, most of those other things that we've voted for earlier today. So, in the spirit of that comment, particularly when something is a very small source, I don't see any reason to exclude it and make it part of a revolving fund. I would ask that a lot of these things, particularly the smaller amounts, continue to go on, accept the fee, and have it go in the general fund, and if a department has the need to do something, have them budget it out of the general fund, as is the normal course of things, before we wind up being a town with 300 separate little fiefdoms. So, thank you. I would vote against this.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 41, which is accept and adopt? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. Motion carried. Article 42. See if the town will vote to set spending limits for various revolving funds that have been authorized pursuant to Section 1-8 of the Town Code and act fully thereon, and the spending limits are set forth in a chart below the narrative of the article, and I'm not going to read the entire chart. Mr. Chori?
Article 42, Annual Department Revolving Funds Authorization. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
So, the motion, was there a second? I'm sorry. Yeah. The motion under Article 42 is to be made and seconded, except and adopted as printed. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It is a vote. Article 43, Stabilization Fund. Let me just get to the article itself here. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to be added to the stabilization fund and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori?
Article 43, Stabilization Funds. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $1,074,171 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
All right, so the motion under Article 43 is accept and adopt, and the sum of $1,074,171 be transferred from free cash into the stabilization fund. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. I rule that it got the necessary two-thirds to the extent that it needed to. Article 44. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to be added to the OPED Trust Fund and to act fully thereon.
Article 44, OPED Trust Fund. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $500,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion's been made under Article 44 and seconded, accept and adopt. The sum is $500,000 to be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Is there any debate? Yes, ma'am. Sure. Somebody want to tell them what OPED...
Sure. OPED is Other Post-Employment Benefits. Is that sufficient, sir? Okay, thank you.
Any further debate? Yes, in the middle, Mr. Conroy?
Yeah, can somebody tell us what the unfunded liability for the town is in this OPED account?
Finance Director, Carol Capola.
Good afternoon, Carol Capola, the Finance Director.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. So, the last actuarial evaluation that the town had, it's required every two years, was the liability was $42 million.
So, we're putting another $500,000 towards it, Mr. Conroy. Go ahead.
Is the liability $42 million, or is the unfunded amount $42 million?
The balance in the OPED Trust Fund that the town has established is just under $4 million. The total liability for the town of Harwich is $42 million.
Thank you, Carol. Any further debate on the motion under Article 44? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It is a vote. Article 45. This is to pay unpaid bills from prior year. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to pay unpaid bills of prior years, as provided in Chapter 44, Section 64. Mr. Chori?
Article 45, fund prior years' unpaid bills. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $21,349 be transferred from free cash to pay the following unpaid bills from fiscal year 2021. Weston and Sampson, $21,107. Eversource, $119.60. WB Mason, $15.92. And WB Mason, $106.48.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article 45. It's accept and adopt, the sum's $21,349. Since they're not printed in the warrant, let me just tell you those unpaid bills again. They're Weston and Sampson for $21,107, Eversource $119.60, and two to WB Mason, $15.92 and $106.48. Is there any debate? Before I put it to a vote, I will tell you that unpaid bills at the town meeting require a four-fifths majority to pass. So, if I don't get a unanimous vote, I will have to take another standing count. Are they an engineering company that does work for the town on their wastewater? Any further debate? All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare. Article 46. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money for the Harwich Chamber of Commerce to promote the town, its businesses, cultural endeavors, and to advance economic development initiatives for and with the town of Harwich. Set monies to be used to manage and fulfill year-round visitor center business information services, promote and market the town, generate and initiate materials and activities that encourage establishment, growth, and sustainability of businesses in Harwich, and to implement economic development objectives and activities in partnership with the town. Mr. Chori?
Article 46, promote the town of Harwich. I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $30,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
All right, so we moved and seconded under Article 46. It's accept and adopt. The sum is $30,000. It's proposed to be taken from free cash. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare. Article 47. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of $20,000, to help defray the expenses of the Chase Library and the Harwich Port Library. Set funds to be expended in the direction of the Chase Library and the Harwich Port Library trustees, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori?
Article 47, defray the expense of Chase Library and the Harwich Port Library. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $20,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under 47, accept and adopt. The sum is $20,000. It's proposed to be taken from free cash. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare. Article 48. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow a sufficient sum of money to supplement the Massachusetts Cultural Council annual allocation for community grant awards to artists, performers, and interpretive scientists who bring events and programs to local venues, which enhance the cultural experience of Harwich citizens of all ages. Mr. Chori?
Article 48, supplement of the annual allocation of Mass Cultural Council grants. I move that the article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $3,600 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion's been made under Article 48. It's accept and adopt, and $3,600 be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It carries unanimously. Article 49. We're there. To see what action the town will take in regard to the Herring Fisheries and to fully act thereon.
Article 49, I move that this customary article be accepted and adopted.
The motion on the Herring Fisheries this year is to accept and adopt. Is Mr. Houston prepared to make some... Mr. Houston?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just going to report that I was over at the West Reservoir the other day. The fish are coming through, and Marge Marion would be very happy to see...
She would be.
...that the electronic counter is saying tens of thousands are coming through.
That's good news, Mr. Houston. Thank you.